Okay, it is April 16, 5:15, 2024. I will call the meeting to order. Ashley, will you do roll call, please?
Lindberg?
Here.
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
And Richard is not here.
Okay, yeah, Councilor Peterson said he wasn't going to be able to make it, so. On the agenda, there's one modification under other reports. We had added in the sheriff, but we will put them at C. And then everybody else, chamber goes to D. HMU goes to E, and public commons will go to F. That's the only changes I have on the agenda. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the amended agenda as I sit here.
Motion? Second?
Motion to Kroger or second to Lindberg?
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And state any conflicts at this time or along the way if they pop up and you forget. We'll move on to the consent agenda. This is all under one motion and one roll call. First, we have the minutes of the April 2, 2024 special council meeting, and the minutes of the regular meeting for April 2, 2024. The claims list, number 1312, the amount of $63,438.57, which is, seemed like a drop in a bucket, the last ones we've had, quite a few years, so that's okay. Any questions about any of those, anybody saw? No? Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of March of 2024. HMU sewer and landfill reconciliation report for March of 2024. Sheriff's fiscal report for March of 2024. Happy anniversary, one year ago yesterday. A little bird wished for that in my ear, that's just amazing that, I don't know if to say it seems shorter or longer, it just seems like it's just been seamless from sitting in my chair, I don't know what else is, but thank you. You can pass that on, I did reach out to the sheriff yesterday, and things seem to be moving right along in law enforcement, so. But one year ago yesterday, before we did that changeover, so. Renewal application for Hy-Vee, Inc., doing business as Hy-Vee, Class B retail alcohol license. Renewal application for the Old West Side Lounge, doing business as the Old West Side Lounge, Class C retail alcohol license. Renewal application for the Rocking Chair, Class C retail alcohol license. Automatic renewal application for Fairway Store, Inc., number 790, Class E retail alcohol license. And a renewal application for Vismart, Inc., doing business as Mi Casa, a Class C retail alcohol license. Is there a motion or a second for the consent agenda?
Motion? Second?
Motion by Rudolph, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Now we've reached the time for the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget. I guess I would just, we don't need a motion, do we need a motion to open the hearing? No, just, you know, the time and place, anything we need to add to that, Gene? We've talked about it once or twice, but I know if you want to give a synopsis?
Yeah, I don't think we've had any, Ashley, unless we've had any written or people stopping in the city hall. Yes, we certainly have reviewed this quite a bit the last three or four meetings, as well as that planning that started back in November. And this is the final step to certify this with the state. And posted in the paper, as well as in your packet, was this notice, which is the high-level summary. And the requested levy is this bottom number in the bottom right-hand corner. So the levy is dropping from 16.35 down to 16.66. Yet, the overall dollars being requested is more because of the higher valuations on tax evaluation. I won't go into the scenario of the colorful charts and the five-year trend, but again, we've, you as a elected body, and I think we as staff and administration has continued to be very fiscally responsible as we walked into this year with all the House file changes. Kept the debt levy, debt service levy quite consistent. That will likely change in two or three years when we're ready to bond again, but. Unless you have any questions? I know we include a whole bunch of required in your packet. Everything is filed at the stage it would be certified, and we'll certify that later tonight or tomorrow morning, I think. It'll be Ashley's first opportunity at the certify button.
I logged on today and I can do it, so.
Doc will have a little celebration tomorrow morning, but she's doing great. But this is the final step, and memorializes all the planning, and this is what the numbers are.
I just want to comment, with that colorful chart you did put in there, Gene, where we were eight, nine years ago with our general fund, how many days we would survive if...
This one?
Yes, that to me is, that's a very good trend. It maybe dropped down a little bit this year, but we're definitely, we're trending in the right direction. Or if our government would come to a screeching halt, and how long we could survive if we had no money coming in. Hasn't happened in, knock on whatever this is, long, long, long ever, but it's always, we need to have that. You know, we were close to your tenure when you started, so.
I was going to just touch on this with our filing, the receiving file in the audit, but yeah, the health, we'll call it the health leader, the health status of our general fund, which this is a visual indicator of that for general fund balance. This continues to be very in a solid position, which again, keeps our credit rating solid, keeps us in a solid position if we had a bunch of unplanned hiccups, that it doesn't turn us into a top spin and require some emergency funding. Thanks for pointing out there.
And the discussion about the annual budget for 2425? I would ask then for a motion to close the hearing?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Next then, I would look to Resolution 2562, adapting, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year ending June 30 of 2025. You have any other comments that you didn't make, 10 seconds ago, Gene?
This is a required resolution, and the states have been seen and discussed and approved by you as a council.
Oh, Ashley, click the button.
I will make that motion, sir.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
You can officially click away.
Yay!
Yeah, and I know Ashley's title may be new, but she's been a big part of this, so. I know, you've learned, one of the better ones, but I know you've learned, so it's confident going forward here, so.
No pressure, yeah?
No, not at all.
All right, other business, Resolution 2563, authorizing the signing warrants. I think there's some changes because of some of the changes we've had in our staff. With Hugh, Susan, still got me stuck in the middle somewhere, Sharon and Kyle. You need two signatures generally on most checks, correct?
Over $2,500, yep.
So, just to make sure we've got everything in place going forward, so. Anybody want to make a motion to authorize the signing warrants?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye. Do I need to introduce myself like that?
I don't know, I was just thinking the same thing. Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And warrants just for some late persons, that's checks, so.
Yeah, you said over $2,500, so. I guess it allows you to sign checks for under $2,500, yes. Does he not get to sign checks at all?
Nope.
Huh, never knew that.
This is the first time I've been able to, because I've always wrote them, so.
Overall control and separation.
So Jen writes them now, correct?
Yep, so she can't sign anything.
All right, and approve the IDOT federal aid agreement for the Transportation Alternatives Program for River Access Project. We talked about that the last time, I think.
Yes, actually, I just announced it last time, that this is the formal paperwork to sign the agreement. This is one of the two funding arms, you may recall. We applied for and received the DNR Water Trails Grant, which was $218,500. And then this is the TAP, or Transportation Alternatives Program through the DOT. That's the $273,000 that makes this half million dollar project doable. So there's two funding streams, this is the funding agreement. And we've had a similar DOT agreement for the work, but we're essentially managing two funds in addition to our local contribution for the project. And one of the key items here is until this is approved and filed with the DOT, we can't submit any reimbursements under this grant funding, which we're well aware of. So this would be used for construction only, which again, we're at least a year away from construction, so we've already...
And we don't have to match any of these funds, correct?
No, our, so since this is a federal, our local match can be our DNR grant.
Okay.
And our, with our local money is about $14,000, is what we'd had. And from a local tax base, this is a one of quality of life enhancement that very economical impacted the tax base here, or tax asking. It's been a lot of work going on for a couple of years to make this happen, so. But this is the final funding piece in the agreement.
Excited to get that started?
Yes, and again, this involves our engineer, LT Leon, who did, called it preliminary. And our next check in the DOT system, Joe probably knows this like the back of his hand from working in his previous life, but it's called TPMS. But our next checkpoint in that is middle of June with our preliminary plans. All that's teeing up for the December letting, so.
Okay, so a motion to approve the federal aid agreement for Transportation Alternative Program for River Access Project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And next, we need to receive and file the 2223 fiscal year audit, which was some light reading of what, 40, 50 pages?
We've made a few notes. This had been released to the public and signed off on at the state auditor level just a few days before our last city council meeting. You know, we do need to receive and file this, you all receive copies directly from the state auditor's office. Just let the public know, this is publicly available document. Out at the state website, you can stop in here, and we can direct you to that as well. This is our sixth or seventh year with having a state auditor. And I've just made a couple of notes, just be sure to highlight here is, again, if you have the opportunity to read all 70 pages, certainly entertain any questions, and if not, we'll check with the auditor. But on page, I'm going to get my pages correct here. There are two main opinions, which is an adverse opinion, as well as an unmodified opinion. And Pam Norman, who's spoken with us a few years ago, addressed the council. But the adverse opinion specifically relates to that as part of our family, HMU and us, that HMU maintains separate financial records. And as a, so they have an adverse, we provide the adverse opinion because of those two separate financial recording systems. So this is just simply saying, this audit reflects the cities minus HMU's. The unmodified opinion, which is down here in the middle section, the net comments there is that, in their opinion, that, and again, in verbatim, that the financial statements referred to are presented fairly in all mature respects, and the respective cash basis, financial position, and governmental activities in each major fund and remaining fund, but they're saying that they're accurate and presented fairly. That's the unmodified opinion. We did, as you look at page 15, and that was where I have the, this number here, which is our, oops, highlights that $5,033, that's an increase, that's our disbursements or expenses of the general fund, which at $5033, $5,033, matches this year-over-year trend. We had a bit higher general fund expenses, and we had a $1.4 million tree project. We anticipated that, so that was a noted change in the expense side. Just want to highlight once again that throughout the year, if there were ever questions, I know Ashley's been involved with those too, that if they're procedural or how we're coding or placing these in funds, that we have good cooperation, collaboration with the state auditor. It's not as though it's an adversarial type of, so we work with them throughout the year. And one other highlight I would like to make is, two other highlights I should say. One is the, since we had over $750,000, a three-quarter million dollars of federal funds, that it's required that you do what's called a separate audit, or a single audit is the actual term. So that's what that referred to on page 54, is that's the single audit for the federal funds had the same result that according to review and records, the records review that we complied and as well as our engineers, with all the requirements, accuracy in reporting with the single, the single audit. And lastly, year-over-year, there are things, yeah, so things such as segregation of duties. Many municipalities our size, and certainly smaller, this is year-over-year, and that's simply due to size of staff. I'm guessing each HMU has this similar, similar type of. So although we do have separate duties in the city hall office with Ashley and staff, that there are times that if someone's out, they actually handle a couple steps of the process. So we just acknowledge that. Same goes with the Firefighters Association, that's a component unit that they look at as well. Difficult to maintain segregation of duties there. And the other comment there was just ensuring that their monthly reconciliations and bank balances are being done. And then the, it wasn't highlighted in the report, but we certainly will highlight that this is the first time in probably five or six years that there was no reference to the billing and collection services between HMU and the city with landfill and sewer. Most of you know, in fact, we're going to discuss that later in the agenda. This is the first audit where that has not been noted. Just acknowledging that that process and accuracy is working well. And we're looking at that every month with the, we're looking at it every month with the consent agenda, and that's included in your packet. To close the highlights of the audit report, just want to touch on a few areas. Comments, questions? And here in a few months, we'll be engaging in the next audit once 2/30 happens. And I'm sure within three or four weeks, our city staff will have stuff uploaded and ready for, probably in a couple of weeks. And ready for them again.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Any hearing, no other questions? So a motion to receive and file the 2223 fiscal year audit report.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Next, we need to receive and file Personnel and Finance Committee meeting minutes from April 11, 2024. So a motion to receive and file?
A motion? Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And then out of that, first item is to review the options for the sewer billing and collections re-audit, which I think most of us were there for that meeting. So we kind of discussed this.
That came out just last week. I was just going to bring it up on the screen, but for some reason, that, not long in advance. It'd sure help if I was in the right file. We had two attachments that went out with the package, you may recall. Also simply, just for public awareness, and those that are here, this originated back in 2020, 2021, and was brought to the council at that time. There were some inconsistencies, and wanting to go back and look, were the appropriate amounts being reimbursed from HMU to the city, going back as far as 2014 for sewer billing and collection. Engaged the, the state auditor was the determination from the elected body at that time. And not unusual that it's taken them, again, this is a couple of years later now, right? And we've asked each year. And two months ago, I was contacted by the state auditor, and the person who was assigned signature on this letter, which is Jim Cunningham. And Jim explained all of this, and I simply asked him to put that in writing. And so this could be presented to our council. And what this indicates is, from their procedural review, is that everything is working extremely well. Any potential inconsistencies, and the oversight is working as it should. And they indicated that there was a misunderstanding as far as going back and doing a full-blown financial audit. And that could still be done, yet from the state auditor's office, they indicated that would be on a billable hour. And based upon their staffing levels, they thought they would not get to that for a few years. There's still the same option, which we had discussed back with the council in 2021, to hire an outside service. Best estimate is that, in the $30,000 to $50,000 range. And that's what this essentially, and that was discussed with you all last week. The governing body needs to make a determination which direction to go. Do you want to acknowledge that procedurally, everything is improved, and things are trending? Or to go back up to 10 years, and where some of those records may not be available, and incur additional expense that may, may or may not result in any money due either way? So that is why I'm bringing it to you as a governing body. When Jim Cunningham called me, and his question to me was, well, what do you want to do? And I kindly said to Jim, the person you're talking to on the other end of the phone does not make that determination. But the governing body will. So with that, Mayor, I'll run it back to you as to, I know the comments you have, and looking for directions.
I think the intent has been achieved. And we have thick processes in place, have been in place now for quite some time, and seem to be trending in the right direction. So I would, I don't vote, I can't make a motion, but I would lean towards just moving on. I think we accomplished what we were looking to do, and making sure we were all consistent. And we are, it seems like, so.
So do we just cancel the re-audit? Is that what we basically need to look at, is canceling that request?
The turning, the crossing point here is one of two things, either to recommend to pursue a re-audit going back as far as '14, '15, or to move forward. But one of those two directions as well. Which we can then inform the state auditor as well, as to our determination. Because they had initially had requested records from HMU, but they're not doing a financial audit, and they could close things out, or just at least close things out on HMU's end as well, so. But that's determining based upon the direction you all want to move.
Yeah, I would, I would think we made great, I think things are doing well, so I would make the motion, we just move forward and cancel the audit and put it to bed.
I will second that. Troy will second that.
So a motion by Lindberg, she, oh, you're paid, actually. Cancel, not ask for another, any move forwards to be done, second by Shaven. Although he didn't really say it, he started to say it.
That's who you awarded it to.
Roll call, Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Due to working at HMU?
Thanks for the cooperation by HMU.
Yes, absolutely.
Agreed. Thank you for the direction.
Next, we have a review of memorandum of understanding with Shelby County Plant Iowa for tree planting.
Bringing this before you, it's fairly, fairly minor, yet in terms of transparency. And Joe can, Joe can allude to this a little bit as well, that we have a wonderful Shelby County Plant Iowa committee, it's been active for many years, and done a lot of very good things. And back in the early 2000s, I don't know if I have that date right, but the well field was used to plant some seedlings. And those, the intent for those seedlings were to be transplanted throughout public spaces, and also for private property if available. And there were upwards of 100 seedlings planted 15, 20 years ago. With all of the improvements and construction and such on the HMU well field, many of those have been harvested, there's still some left to transplant. Maybe another year or two that they could be taken out of there. But the Plant Iowa committee were no longer wanting, or no longer wanting to use the well fields for that. It's not, it's not a good accessible place. So evaluating with Plant Iowa, would there be other space and on public property that would allow this joint benefit? And that's what this simple memorandum encompasses, and this is the map of the area. And you'll see that there's, something, something else came upon us that needed this public space. Then, you know, there's 90 days in there to either harvest these or allow them to be transplanted by the Plant Iowa committee. So for example, with this year's work night, which will be on April 22, is when that Plant Iowa committee, they engage some of the youth in FAA, and I know our street superintendent helps out during that night. Close to 15 of, some new trees they got through a grant are being transplanted in some more park areas, including the right-of-way in front of Fairway. Some of you have noticed that those ash trees were removed. But that's just some examples of some of the work that that committee makes happen, in addition to trying to provide future tree canopy. Any comments or questions?
I just want to clarify your picture of where the property actually sits. And what's behind the HMU water plant?
Behind the dog pound, is that where it is?
Yes, it'd be to the east of the HMU water plant. And the dog pound and our Anton lift station, park shed, so it's between those public facilities in that open space. Can I help out, Troy?
I think so.
Actually, they got white flags that are ready to come.
They may have, but I think the plan is trying to do those on that work night.
There's the flags, there are the flags that are ready for the, for the plant.
And this again, the agreement says no more than 75 in this space.
Pretty quick, it'd be a big spade to move them, but they're pretty good size.
Yes, Tom Conry has been a great partner as well with transplanting. But there's, some of the larger ones now would require a larger spade.
Yeah, they can't, that's the fear that we're going to have to probably end up cutting them down because they're so close together too. But the good thing about it, I don't know if I had mentioned that, the fair board has 29 of the larger ones marked out, which they think they can get moved, which is... which they think they can get moved, which from Sorensen's has a bigger. That's supposed to happen, I think the one call cleared at the fairgrounds today. So I assume they'll be moving trees this, this week.
So another great, wonderful example of.
Community connection.
Yes, the cooperation, but also from 20 years ago, the intended purpose to continue a tree canopy. And no one knew for sure that an MR lash board was going to come around and decimate. Which impacted the fairgrounds as well, so. Good. But that's what this contemplates and. We felt it was important to memorialize this so that in 15 or 20 years, there's public record of it and a map, so.
Okay, sir, motion, memorandum of understanding with Shelby County Plant Iowa.
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Next up is ordinance number 202401. So would this be like the second reading for this, third, or you can wave in?
That's up to you, yeah, this would be the second reading.
Second reading, correct.
And it's up to you to contemplate, I guess before going, we've had.
Anybody?
We've had no comments to City Hall or to myself unless it was a. And most, this is pretty non controversial, but it's up to you if you decide to wave the third reading of it off.
All right, so this is ordinance 202401. Ordinance amending chapter 69.08 of code of ordinance since the city of Harlan pertaining to no parking zones. Changes include on 11th Street on the west side from Parkington Street to Main Street. And on the east side from Main to Broadway Street. On Victoria Street on both sides from Third Street to Exchange Street. And then on Pine Street on the north side from Sixth Street extending 30 feet west. This will be the second reading and I guess you guys decide, I guess if you want to wave a third, I guess. Or if you want to wait another couple of weeks and do it again. It's up to you.
Have we had any feedback?
And which I highlighted the last, the first reading of this, that item A was resident driven in that area. And then items B and C were. Safety and as we evaluate the safety in these areas and space for emergency vehicles. And also safety turning on a pine street coming up that one way, going into the one way.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion, an ordinance 202401?
Just to clarify, so the motioning, we're motioning to move it just to make it happen or we have to go to another hearing?
No, you can make that motion to waive the third reading.
I would make the motion to waive the third hearing and put it.
Should we do it first, second time and dispense the third?
So it'd be approving the second reading and dispensing the third and moving to final of option.
Correct. That's what your motion. That's what I was trying to think of words. Thank you, sir. What Gene said.
Yeah.
How about motion?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
City administrators report.
See my papers? We received notice last week, another mini, not many, but definite celebration. That our CDDG community development block grant application for a half a million dollars to assist with our sewer lining project. Was approved. And that means that will be in combination with our local and some of the ARPA money. Another 1.2, 1.3 million dollar project. And Meachran Kim being K R engineer, then has already started working on plans, so. Will, but prior to moving forward, we will be getting. Ashley's been in contact with SWIPCO. And the actual agreement will be to go through the formality of approving the agreement for the funding. And don't know if that'll be at the next meeting or the second meeting in May. So that's exciting. And no matter time, because there's maybe a lot of private property I'm just going to attest to, as well as we've. Had some more roots in some of our public mains, we're going to do more cleaning. But again, due to the dry, the dry conditions the past few years. Old clay tile lines or in roots are trying to find any moisture and they're trying to find sewer lines, so. Great timing on that. The bridge project on Fourth and Main. Worked cooperatively with HMU last week. And our, our street team helped quite a bit and your team, but got HMU line located for the back to the east. And then there's excavator down there, mobilization has started with the contractor. Awareness to the public that tentatively Friday, county's confirming this, but. Old 59 or North Linden Road, just at incorporated limits, so just out beyond the daycare and the Lincoln Foose property. There's a stretch there will be closed for overlay, it's been milled, but it's likely Friday, it'll be closed for the day. Once they have it confirmed, they're going to push that out on social media. But then we'll, we'll support that as well through our social media, but just awareness to the public and for, for others on that.
Is that just one piece Gene they're doing, or you can do the whole thing eventually, or is it just?
Uh, no, it's from, essentially we're incorporated single limits out to 1100, which is the first bridge there. 1100 to the next, next gravel road that goes back west.
They're not going to keep going all summer long, then it'll just be that one.
Just that one stretch. On what we call Old 59. I can't remember the total distance. So, yeah, awareness on that. Reminder once again that. Next meeting will be Gene and Rudolph's last meeting. And which is Ward three. And there is a, as discussed last meeting, just awareness to the public. Again, that anyone in that southwest quadrant generally that wants to express interest in serving on council with this team. There's an interest form, we can, we can email to you or stop in City Hall. Maybe somebody who's been contacted from other, but just direct them to that interest form and then the council can determine how you'll. Either interview or speak with one or more candidates. In an attempt to appoint that at the 21st year. Thank you and a shout out to Dan Crease and Crease Garden Center, they for many years helped us out. Just donating their time to help till our community garden and that's ready and they help out. Help us out with that as well as Iowa State Extension, so there are plots available yet, if you want to sign up. Iowa State Extension handles that, but continue that location in front of the year and again appreciate Dan Crease and Crease Garden Center. And the last two items, it's not that lengthy.
We haven't started talking about them yet.
Reminder once again that May 4th, may the 4th be with you, which is Saturday, is going to be 5K and Game Day. Sign up is happening now, it's an event at Pioneer Park to highlight our premier park in the community, as well as get folks out to see. The current green playground and meet the need for replacement there. But games, food, a run and a walk. And there's been multiple signups already, so just appreciate community support and the intent would be to try to make that an annual event. So we really appreciate the energy and passion of those volunteers in that committee. And then lastly, I intend to, at the second meeting of each month. And I'll say I'll, stole this from Joe at HMU, that will highlight any employee anniversaries. Any new hires or retirements that are happening, so we know when those happen, but I, or we think it'd be good to. Share that formally with councils as well as the public. So for this month, our, we have two part-time park staff that started. Don Brooke, who has helped us past years, so Don has started for the season, as well as Leroy Cleveland. Has started with the park staff. Although this new time, this new hire started a few months ago, just want to highlight that again, Susan Brahman. Is our new admin team member here at City Hall. We have two anniversaries, Amanda Brewer at the library have eight years on April 18th. And Jeff Busich will have 31 years on April 21st. And no new retirements, but we do know that Jane Smith retired and she was officially done on April 1st. So recognize those folks and appreciate them and, as I'm sure you all do too, so. Plan to share that with you, the second meeting this month. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Questions, comments for Gene?
If we had any interest, if anybody put an application for Ward three yet.
I don't think formally any have been turned in yet. I know there's been some conversation somewhere, but, and again, that is up until May 3rd.
That they can turn in?
Yes.
All right, thanks Gene.
Sorry, May 2nd, I had the wrong date on that. May 2nd, which is the date on the website and then the notice.
Under my report, I got a couple, I have a couple of things, I would just probably just make this proclamation is. I, Jay Christensen, Mayor of the City of Harland, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day. Which we talk a lot about our trees, we've taken a lot of trees down and. We've been known as a tree city, I don't know how many cities in the state of Iowa would get that, but we have carried that. Badge for a long, long time and I'm sure there's lots of cities dealing with what we deal with, but it is. It is one of those deals that we need to replace what we're getting rid of, so hopefully that's just a reminder. Arbor Day is a day that reminds people to get out and plant something if you lost one. Other than that, and I have, if I could do these both on, one, do I have to do them separate?
Separate.
Separate, okay. So I would reappoint Reed Moser, Moser to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission for a term to expire April 19th of 2027. Look for a motion and second on Reed Moser.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Then I would look to appoint Russ Chamberlain to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission for a term to expire on April 19th, 2027.
Make the motion as well.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
And if I could, Mayor, just to add on to that, Charlie Parkhurst is the seat that Russ Chamberlain, so Charlie fulfilled. Did a great commission member and the team there appreciated him and. He was recognized at the last Veterans Commission meeting with the certificate that you had signed and a little key momento for, for the city. So appreciate Charlie and his service there.
Yeah, I mean, those, those commissions are all voluntary type things and it's just time and that's. It's nice when people want to give their time back to our communities, so. And those are veterans, so. They've given their time to our country, so they give it back to our city, so it's very nice for them to do that, so. Uh, that's all I have under my report. Then I would add in the sheriff's report, we have Sergeant Haas, anything you want to discuss?
Pretty peachy team. We have Derek Stefan, our youngest deputy, graduated from the Academy Friday.
Questions for those guys? For him? No?
You always know me, I'm never short of additional comments, but just in the recent past, we. Communicate regularly, I know many of our departments do in terms of continued partnership. But on a micro level, here in the past month, we had representation from sheriff office, some are corporate enforcement personnel. Some are animal control personnel that met cooperatively about an ongoing. Many, many types of things going on at a certain property. But just the cooperative effort to come together and. Address those collectively and say, okay, what's our, you know, collective plan? So many of those things that maybe you don't hear or see about all the time yet, take for granted. Starts with partnerships and those relationships, I mean, obviously have to be formalized with things like 2020, but. I always like to say that we're, we're all on the same team, right? So appreciate that and your team there.
Thank you.
That's, wanted to highlight that, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, sir.
Todd Veleen, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few items to note. This week, we're actually celebrating two national weeks. One's for the Public Safety Telecom Communicator Week and as part of that, if you haven't already. Just to show them our appreciation, you can call Alex and you can adopt a dispatcher. And then he'll explain the program to you and what you do, but I thought it was a fantastic idea that he came up with there, so. And then we're also celebrating Shelby County Extension and Outreach Week this week. And for that, on Thursday, the 18th, we will have a ambassador visit at their place at 9:00 AM. And celebrate their week. Also then on Friday, the 19th at 11:00 AM, we'll be over at Hero's Attic as they're celebrating 20 years. And if you remember the beef Sundays they used to sell from the fairgrounds when they were running the fairground food booth. We're going to have those on Saturday. And so we've been missing those for a couple of years, good time to stop by and go pick one of those up. Blood drive on April 22nd from 8 to 2 at Mertu in the album room, just give Ruth a call at 755-4316. We have our luncheon on Wednesday, the 24th for administrative assistance days, $20 per person, we still have some seats available. And then also just a reminder that West Central Community Actions Head Start Program is now taking enrollments. And we know how much those services are needed for a lot of families here, so just encouraging the public to enroll early and, and don't wait, so make sure you got a spot. And then last thing, on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00, head over to Shelby County State Bank West. Back up your truck or your semi and say, here's all my paper crap from my house, I don't need anymore, please shred it for me. And I'll take care of it for you. Right? We, a couple of things that will be coming up, we'll be making announcements soon. We will be having a candidate's forum for the upcoming primary, we just got to get, get it arranged. It'll take some place sometime in May. And then also, we will be soliciting for new board members, because we've lost a board member. Who just went in a different direction with her career, so she's no longer working for a chamber member. So we'll have an election for that coming up soon.
Anything for Todd?
I got a question for you, Todd. And probably if I'm oblivious to this, I apologize, maybe you've updated this, but I know we discussed that Make My Move program. Is that, we're actively?
It is an actively ongoing program.
Okay.
Right now, just the stats I just saw today. We have year to date had 54,000 people look at Shelby County. And then, you know, the numbers dropped down, I've had up to 1,300 people click all the way through. I'm actively working 46 interests right now. To be honest with you, one of the hangups is we don't quite offer the same, you know, we're not giving them a bunch of money.
Correct, that's a.
We have a wonderful program with Shelby County State Bank, they're offering some help with, you know, $500 for the down payment if you get your loan through Shelby County State Bank. We've got other amenity things that we're offering them. First thing I do once they raise their hands, I try to get them on the phone, because if. There are other amenities we could probably include if some of the things that we have out there just aren't their interest. If they don't golf or they don't do this or do that. Or if they don't have a big family for a pool pass or something like that. But yeah, we've had great response, but I am running into, I'm down to about 90 days to. Convince somebody to move here, if I do that, then the program worked, so.
Best of luck to you, thank you, I just was curious.
Yeah, no, we've had really good response.
That's good. It'll slowly build and build, so.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Harlem Municipal Utilities, Joe Russenberg.
Hello, everyone.
Joe.
Just two updates, just on some projects we have. Again, our raw water project update, McCarthy trenching should be done by the end of this week. We're thinking weather dependent with the final water service line connections to all the wells in our south wellfield. Holstein Electric is working on electric and controls in pretty much all of our existing wells, kind of jumping back and forth between the south wellfield and the east wellfield. Trying to do what they can at this point. trying to do what they can at this point. Patriot's Choice, looking at probably starting on the wellhouses for the two new, two of the new main, our wells, 33 and 34 in the south wellfield, hopefully get started on those in the next week or two. And those two wells will have temporarily connected in at this moment, just to help with our flows. Other item is our electric overhead underground project. Contractor from the pre-con is planning to be on-site Monday, the 22nd, and what they're gonna start on is start pulling some of the existing poles that we have in our alleys, mainly the ones that had MediaCom on, they're not, their facilities are off those poles, they'll start pulling some of those poles and then be working on new street lights and security lights as part of the project, so that's kind of their concentration for once they get on-site. That's all I have for today, I guess any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any comments from the public? Sharon's Body Arts here again.
Yep.
She always pretty quiet.
He is.
Comments from up here?
I think just the great groups, like you said, the plant Shelby County, is Shelby Plant Shelby County or Shelby County Plant?
Shelby County Plant Iowa.
Okay, it was like another group that you said, we have so many groups that people may not even hear of, right? They're just, it's very interesting, but ended up for how long, and just great organizations that are quiet and contribute.
Yeah, we're lucky we have people that are passionate about different things in our community and they step up, and it's like they just unsung heroes that just kinda continue to do what they do, so. All right, hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.